That are running late and a lot of the agenda items that are on there are specific to one of the board conversations and so we're gonna skip down and do item five once we get the meeting going and then we'll go back to those orders hoping that Commissioner Boyle and Commissioner Morgan will be here by then. So again, this is the Human Resources Committee meeting calling it to order on Monday, October 17th at 11:00 AM. The copy of the open meeting is at, is located on the wall on the, to the entrance of the room. We, I would like to go around and have everybody introduce themselves and say what department they're from and we'll start on the outside.
Matt Overly County Human Resources.
Denise Luthi, Assistant Register D.
Carol Bonley, Human Resources Department.
Marshall Carter, Retired Corrections.
Stuart Shobin, Retired Corrections.
Thomas Larkin, Civil Service and Corrections.
Teresa Yer, County Attorney's Office.
Roger Oden, County U.S.
Michelle Winger, Corrections, you were president.
Brian Fernsack, Sheriff, President, NPLP two.
Greg Madsen, Retired Sheriff.
Jim O'Briar, Sheriff.
John Buie, Douglas County Treasurer.
Tim McAllister, Human Resources.
Scott Stevens, Independent Consultant, Employee Benefits.
Mary Borgeson, County Board.
Patrick Blumengdahl, County Administrator.
Karen Boats, Human Resources.
Kathy Adair, Employee Benefits, Human Resources.
Constance Myrendor, Douglas County Clerk's Office.
Chris Rogers, County Board.
Todd Bell, Local 554.
Mark Raisimortin, County Labor.
Joel Lorenz, County Finance Director.
If I can introduce yourself?
Matt Lewis, NPLP Law, G, Douglas County Corrections.
Well, welcome everyone and again, we'll begin with item five and then have some discussion on that and hope that Commissioner Boyle and Morgan appear here when, by the time we're done with this, I don't know, agenda item. So, item five, discussing allowing employees to select dental insurance separate from health insurance and vice versa. This was an issue that was brought to my attention and after looking into it, there is a possibility for that to happen. We can do that and I'll have Karen and Kathy talk about the possibility of maybe doing that at the first of the year rather than during this enrollment.
Yes, yeah, we can do that. It's Oracle's, the way we've done benefits in Oracle, we tied both plans together so it required employees to choose the medical, whatever tier, as well as the dental and there's a fast formula and with everything else that was going on this year with change and the implementation with Blue Cross, the electronic filing, we're pretty much inundated to get that done this year but if that's the plan and the desire, then we certainly can do that for 2018 enrollment because then there'll be time to be able to do the testing and stuff. You can't just go in and make a change without doing a whole bunch of testing and make sure it doesn't break anything else and that everything works so with this year, with the timeframe, we're just, we're just not able to do it. But it's, it's a possibility and it's just a matter of the setup and having a little bit of time ahead of us to be able to do that. So if we want to do, if that's the desire, then for the enrollment for 2018, this next fall, a year from now, certainly we could do that.
There was some discussion that we could possibly do it at the first of the year for just those opting into the dental only. Is that still on the table?
I, I think that can be done. It would just require us to have a special enrollment period for individuals that want to enroll in dental but it, it probably wouldn't, I mean, we have to get through the rest of this year and the ACA reporting for 2016 so it probably could be done, if we, if the board decides that that's what they would like to do, it probably could be done in the first quarter of 2017. But it would require a special enrollment, it would require us to go in and do some testing and I, I, the cleanest way to do it would be to wait until the open enrollment in 2018 because we may have individuals that would like to, I'm not sure how many, but it's possible you could have some individuals that would drop medical coverage because all they really wanted was a dental but it's probably more likely that we would have more individuals enroll in dental because they don't have to take medical which would have an impact on the claims and the medical plan but it's, that's all possible.
Any questions? What we'd have to do is put a resolution on the board for us to agree to this change. If they got any questions or comments on this?
I might add just a couple of things if, if the board opts to do that or if you all have to do this. Two things, the one to look at the funding of that plan, fully insured versus self-funded because in my experience, sometimes it makes sense to do one or the other from, almost from a year-to-year basis, the utilization of claims and the other issue on an ongoing basis again is whether or not and how to do open enrollment because of the potential anti-selection inherent with dental versus medical. People sometimes, if given the option, will, will wait till the need it, then collect it and then drop it.
Yeah.
Which by the way, is a big problem with the ACA exchanges. So, you know, some, when you go fully insured, you might not make the decision that sometimes carriers will say one way or the other, you know, you're either going to have penalties for late enrollment or we will let you do manual enrollment.
Yeah, since it's currently a self-insured plan now as part of our medical plan, I don't know, we would, whether or not we would look at going to a fully insured but I would guess we probably would stay with it being self-insured for now. But adverse impacts, you're right, that's a concern.
And then there's some tweaks obviously within the design, I don't want to get into the dealership, but the perio and endo, I mean, there's things you can do to control that utilization like this.
Okay. Hi. Please help Commissioner Borg, uh, Commissioner Morgan.
Borgeson, it's my name.
Morgan and craft him.
There's a bad accident at, just east of 42nd, about a half mile call right as he left the office so they had three lanes blocked. It's blocked up to, I can't remember, I don't think the green trees, but it's blocked up, sorry.
No, that's fine. We're actually jumped down to item five because we were waiting for you and Commissioner Boyle but we were discussing allowing employees to select dental insurance separate from their health insurance and vice versa. There was a request made and so the, the issue is, is that employees have medical coverage through a spouse or some other means.
Right.
And aren't taking the county medical but they would like to take the dental.
And they can just take dental.
Well, not now, not currently. So we are looking at the possibility of changing that up and allowing employees to take just the dental but that wouldn't happen until next year.
Okay.
Okay.
Did anyone talk about the cost of that roughly?
Uh, well, we, we talked about the fact that it's really difficult, it'll probably be difficult for us to predict how many individuals might take the dental but it would have an impact obviously on our medical reserve fund because we would have more individuals involved in our dental plan and, and potential no claims.
And a lot of individuals have asked maybe to get that?
This has been, I think the last three years, there's been at least a request made to do this and it was always the assumption that we couldn't do it but then into further discussion with Aon individuals, it is doable that we can do it.
So that's just dental. I guess if your wife had a miracle that she wanted to get you down, or maybe like choppers.
So, so we talking about next year, like, next year enrollment, like 18 next year?
That would be our preference because it would be cleaner to just make the changes as part of open enrollment but as, as Commissioner Borgeson said, we've had a handful of requests from individuals.
What's a handful?
I've had just a couple, yeah.
Okay.
So we could do it.
Early.
Early or we could just wait until next year's open enrollment which would make it a little bit cleaner. Commissioner Boyle?
Apologize for being late this morning. Excuse me, I wonder if there's anybody in the audience who wish to speak to this?
I asked before you came in.
Oh, did you? Okay. Hopefully I hold your peace and that's.
Okay. So we'll work on a resolution to bring to the board at a future date here to make that change. Okay, going back to item one, oh, please note Commissioner Boyle also joined us. Item one, explore the changes to insurance plan design coverage to reduce the cost of the plan and Commissioner Boyle, I'll let you start this since you're the one who asked that this be on.
Okay, well, I, I think, you know, there are two ways that we can reduce the premiums to all of us, we're in the same plan as you are. We can either reduce the coverage because some, maybe we have some coverage that's not been utilized or it's really, really expensive that we shouldn't have and thinking of, I, I think quite a few people took advantage of bariatric surgery, I don't know whether that should still be out there or not. I, I am for it but I just question that. We may have some services that are expensive that we really need to kind of get a very close look at and see if we can afford it and if we did that, that would be one day, one way I think to bring back, pull back on the amount of money that's needed to fund the program. The other thing is to do what we did do it, recommendation of our finance guy and I, and I really am concerned, you know, when we said there'd be no change, the next thing we do is say, oh, there's also an extra premium which was unrelated. It's, it's really a disaster that we didn't have information when we talked to you because it does sound pretty, well, in Donald Trump's words, that we were lying. So, anyway, the only other way to do it is to do what Joe recommended and that is to take some of the money that we have in the fund and use that and I, is it about $11 million in the fund? About $11 million and I think we're gonna contribute, how much of the money?
Two and a half.
About two and a half million?
Mm-hmm.
Two and a half million to drive down the premium. So those are really the only two things that we can do to try to bring down the premium and that's what I wanted to kind of discuss because I think we could probably, I, maybe this group has already reviewed the coverages. Yes.
Yeah, just, just to make a note that our $300 plan and our $600 PPO plan, they're both grandfathered.
Right.
Basically what that means is if you change any of the benefits to reduce benefits, then you lose your grandfather status and if you lose your grandfather's status, then all of the other things would cost. For instance, co-pays would accumulate rather than, you know, to, to a certain dollar limit. There, there's some provisions that, preventive care that you have to pay for that we don't currently have to pay for so all those.
You basically get into ACA.
Correct. Yes. So then those provisions would apply then to both of these plans if you do any reduction of the benefits.
Okay, and there's no way that if, if all the parties agreed that that could be avoided, is that right?
Yeah, no, because it's part of the, the Amer, it's the ACA.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Does anyone have any other comments on that?
I was gonna say that the other, another option although it's less certain obviously would be increasing the county's contribution to the HSA plan to encourage employees to choose that plan over the, you know, basic PPO plans. Theoretically, give you more contribution to those HSA accounts and it's gonna hopefully drive more people onto the plan. You know, the thing we're faced with now though is we already have pretty good plans that are relatively inexpensive for the employees because we pay for most of it so we'd have to do something pretty substantive as far as increasing the contributions in order to really get them. You either increase the contributions, I don't know if there's other changes you can make to an HSA plan other than increasing contributions but making some changes to try to make that HSA more attractive.
What do you think that would cost the county?
Well, I guess it would depend on what you wanted to.
Give a ballpark for you? What were you thinking?
Well, single, a single employee that takes an HSA, the county contributes $1,000 a year, the family, it, they contribute $2,000 a year so.
And was it deductible right?
3,000 singles, 6,000 family.
And then it's 100% coverage after that?
Correct. And then, you know, another option would be potentially just to offer that free to the employee as no premium, you know, get, give the employee, if you take the HSA, you have no monthly premium, you know, that, that. For the single coverage, right? For the single coverage, mm-hmm.
What, what would that cost, do you think?
Uh, it's, it's around 40 some dollars a month.
Okay.
For the premium so we have about 53 employees that are enrolled right now in the HSA and that's up really actually over the last six months, we were pretty steady at 32 to 36 but I've been, you know, during new employee hire, due to the benefit orientation, so we really tout on that a little bit so I think we're getting a few of those people in.
Commissioner Carr?
Can I ask my question with the number 53?
Commissioner Rogers?
But it is, when you go HSA. This, help me, help me, since we got the health consultant here. The thing about the HSA, HSA is the HSA puts more ownership on the, the person and the insurance we got now takes a little less risk off that person. The, and this to me is the whole, why I'm thinking it's a whole bigger conversation that takes more than a day because our health insurance is kind of codified in contract and because we're grandfathered into the ACA, there's not a lot of change we can do unless, and I don't know if this fits into ACA RAM unless we do, because we had this conversation a while back about, way back, about how some places are making the premiums based on the, the individual risk like before I left, uh, one company that I was at, they were making everybody take, uh, pre-test and based on how you were and how you managed yourself, they adjusted your rates based on how you drove your, like, I was pre-diabetic at one point and, and there, so I had to keep myself at a certain point and where I hit on a scale that's why I'm taking care of myself, my rate adjusted as far as my health. Now, the question is, if you were to do something like that, would that put us in plan change mode as far as ACA because right now, and if it didn't, right now, that's the only option that I'm thinking we get because the thing is, because if you go that route, the employee's doing the same thing they're doing to me if you go on a H, on a HSA because they're taking ownership of it. To me, those are the only flexibilities you got to some degree because when it gets down to it, Aon has told us and showed us what's driving what and so when we, and I'm putting it out here at least to get to discussion, to me, where the real meat is of this discussion and the meat of the discussion is where we're gonna go with behavioral management because that's what's driving the premium and that's what's gonna allow us to play in the same as in how you go here because if you go the, oh, it's the HSA route, you will save at the beginning but you're gonna have to take better, better care of yourself and if they stay on this end, we're either saying we're gonna take more of this cost or it's gonna continue to increase if behaviors don't change. Am I, am I wrong in where I'm going?
You're spot on, Chris. I mean, wellness initiatives have obviously taken on a hold of life over the last 115 years and the migration has gone from, if I may, the carrot to the stick. What you experienced, it sounds like is more the stick approach where, you know, you're, you're kind of incentivized negatively, you know, you will do this in order to get that. Some employers take the opposite approach where, you know, we'll give you something, we'll give you a reduction in your costs or we'll give you, we'll put your name in a drawing for a debit card or something of that nature if you agree to a risk assessment.
But we've done the carrot, not the stick.
Right.
And we have an established wellness program already so.
We just changed it though.
Yes.
For that purpose of giving a premium reduction based on if they do the assessment and if they reach the.
Member health assessment and the biometrics and then reach their goals.
And reach the goals, yes.
Yes, mm-hmm.
Commissioner Boyle?
Mr. Borgeson, I appreciate your description, Chris, it's very helpful. I wonder whether all the employees are tuned in to what HSA does and how it is and what you could save and what it involves, I don't know what the interest would be. Maybe we have to, just as a suggestion, get that information out to everyone so that they can get a hard look at it and ask questions for next year I say.
We, uh, Scott Stevens was actually instrumental when we brought up the HSA plan to educate the union members and regular employees as to whether or not that's the plan that they wanted to go on. Now, if we want to do some further educational pieces to that, that's fine.
I just want to be sure, I mean, I, I'm not a stake on it fully.
Because there's new employees, I'm sure.
So I want information myself and I don't know with anybody else, maybe if they do, maybe that's where we head next.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, good deal. Thanks a lot.
But, go ahead.
I was just wondering if the, if the county would be interested in pursuing a TAF Hartley plan that would include your major medical, vision, dental, loss of time, benefits, short-term disability, and life insurance policy. I mean, as, uh, some of you already know, we have two groups.
Central states.
Yep.
One.
Yep, here in the county and guaranteed rates for the three years not to exceed which one of our groups had had a reduction in rates from our last board revision which was, you know, savings to both parties.
Central states is what they're.
TAF Hartley plan and they've also, and talking to central states, they would be going to ensure the entire county management as well as any partnering units that were willing to, to go down that line.
I know that we looked at that at one time but it may definitely be worth another look and Scott, I'm gonna turn to you for a minute because there is conversation out there for self-insured plans moving towards the design so that we're not, we're actually on a insurance plan. How have you seen that movement occurring? More rapidly, pretty steady, it was big and now it's not?
Yeah, so I think the Affordable Care Act has probably accelerated the desire for employers to look at alternate funding. As you mentioned grandfathering, there, there's a whole nother list of other exemptions that are granted to employers that self-fund a plan so there's now newer incentives. One of the biggest is the health insurance sector tax and that doesn't apply to a self-funded plan. That's a 45% load on your premium.
Yeah.
Which is a pretty big cost item and that goes away merely by changing your funding mechanism to the plan. I think the next big silver bullet that everybody's talking about and where, where both providers and payers are racing towards is these so-called accountable care organizations which every, United Healthcare, Coventry, ADN, Blue Cross, they all have been working within this realm. Blue Cross is clearly the leader at this point given their volume and their national spread and scope of ACOs. I, and I like to refer to these as wellness programs on steroids without needing a third-party wellness vendor per se. So real quick, just for everybody, what happens in the new healthcare delivery system going forward is governed by the Affordable Care Act is providers are moving away from fee for service to fee for value. So rather than get compensated which they've historically bound by the more they do, the more they get paid, which is quite literally the, the way fee for service works, the federal government is, is forcing a change via the Affordable Care Act to a fee for value model which is brought to bear by these so-called accountable care organizations which are collaborative efforts in large part between health insurance providers and health insurance payers. So whether that, that payer is like a Douglas County, you're a payer, you're a health plan that's self-funded or whether that payer is an insurance company like a United Healthcare or Blue Cross, what, what is happening is that patients are getting put into these various tools, they call it attribution, so you are attributed to a doctor and so how that doctor does treating you over the course of some period of time will determine how and how much that doctor gets paid. So long story short, the, the new silver bullet if you will, the, the way to reduce healthcare spend going forward is by channeling your patient volume to these ACOs, to these accountable care organizations and you've perhaps had some conversations with that behind the scenes with, with Blue and Blue is very.
Blue will be coming and working with them to come and actually do a presentation on ACO but we did have one, uh, gosh, like a year, three years ago?
Yeah, it was pretty, well, no, we had a, we had a conversation about an ACO about a year ago with everybody at the table.
At the, no, they came and gave a presentation. Yeah.
And there was obviously some concerns expressed.
Right.
The whole idea about whether or not ACOs are dressed up HMOs, the concern about narrow networks. There's a lot of perception or reality, what's perception, what's reality, there's a lot of education that needs to occur before getting into something like that.
Correct.
Okay, Scott, but say for instance, okay, we have this conversation with Blue, with the payer, they're, they're there, it's still, it, it puts us in a realm then though still of, we start looking at the data and the people in the system that's driving the data. We, we're still in the same piece of, we, of it's for the employees around the table. I, I see this as a whole year really with the, with the unions about how we're gonna do these contracts, about how we're gonna play them because it really then is a whole new discussion about behaviors because once you start these, these, these payers about what they say about the data, like say for instance, some of the diabetes stuff that's driving, some of the chronic stuff, that ACO pushes some behavioral stuff about how they're, how, how we doing some stuff and that even means internally, I mean, I see stuff like, if we get into that position, you know, I do see the vending machine stuff. I see big stuff around here, no, I mean, like policies about encouraging them to get out here and walk and other stuff like that. No, I'm, I'm serious because when we had the conversation about the wellness thing 10 years ago, I said vending machines are coming and, and it is, I mean, at every place and I'm just saying, when we go into this discussion, that's, that's what I meant at the, at the, the board meeting where this discussion is more than this meeting. If, if we, if you all are serious about hitting this, this is a big behavioral change that when you look at this data from Aon, this stuff has been coming for three, four, five years and it's this chronic stuff that is a behavioral change so that puts us in a whole new different deal as the players, I mean, probably to the point where you gotta bring somebody in analytics-wise to start looking at this and start doing a whole different decision making.
It, it will definitely be a huge, I mean, even the wellness piece of it, we have dismal response by employees to even do the, the assessment piece, so.
It's intrusive, the perception is, it's very intrusive and it is intrusive, I mean, the questions that are asked are, they're trying to get to the heart of behavior, lifestyle choices, risk, risk adversity. The beauty of these ACOs, at least initially, is you can do, and we'll talk to you about this, sort of a soft introduction where nobody even knows it's happening so what they do is they'll do the analytics, they'll look at, at utilization patterns for your population for the last couple of years and they'll see, okay, Commissioner Borgeson, you're seeing Dr. Jones on a regular basis so we're gonna go ahead and attribute you to him and it's, it's done behind the scenes. They're doing this, Blue Cross is doing this both on fully insured and self-funded plans. So you might already have, and if they haven't done this, ask them to do this, you may already have 30, 40% of your population right now today on your plan that are being attributed to ACO physicians within the Blue Cross distinction. So, and to take Chris's point, other stuff first, so rather than you all spend the time and effort to get that patient or get that employee to engage their decision support tools and engage the provider and make those decision changes, the provider's gonna do that for you because the provider now has a new incentive. If they can get ahold of that patient and help them improve on their chronic illness or the predisposition, they're gonna make more money. In, in the initial models, it's more about bonusing but eventually it'll be how they get paid. There will be no more fee for service. Whether you get paid or how much you get paid will be determined on, on the wellness of each patient that you serve. So this is, is really exciting stuff, it's very positive. Unfortunately, we're all spending so much time and energy and I'm sure my human resource colleagues in the room will support this, complying with the insurance reforms that we're, we don't even know necessarily what's happening on the provider side but that's the cost of healthcare, it's not insurance and I think seeing that play out now, insurance companies are certainly getting fed up and happy and all of this, it's, it's utilization trouble, it's chronic illness, that's really a lot of, and all this.
And can I say, that's, that's just why I had a, a little bit of a baby at the board meeting when he kept being saying, this is radical, this is radical, no, it's just what healthcare is right now and this is the discussion of what it is.
You're right. You're not as radical as he.
Amen to that.
Let me ask you a question, what can we do to kind of get off the dime and get some information out? This has been a really good conversation, it's not my call but.
Well, I think we would have to, as Chris said, schedule ongoing conversations for a while to really vet some of this and so that we understand not only as board members and staff that do all this but also with our employees. So while right now we're moving towards the open enrollment piece, this would be for the future. So we would start now, really taking that data that we have, analyzing it, and then looking at the different options that we would potentially have and start vetting each one so that we would be in a better position next year to make any changes if we so desired to.
Does that sound good to everybody, sort of?
Do, do you all understand what we're talking about?
Yeah.
Okay, do you have any questions?
None of us.
Okay, do you have any questions on that? Okay.
Well, we're still talking about, you know, the changes to the plan, what as employees would, if we want to start talking radical plans, we'd bring that up at this point.
Go, say that again.
I'm here, I'm not representing a union or a group of people, I'm just here as an employee, bringing up my, my two cents worth and what I think the county should potentially explore.
Okay.
And, and what I'm looking at is, I know when we do, when, when we used to do our comparables, we would compare to Sedgwick County, Kansas. They have over 500,000 people in their county, so do we. They have 2,500 employees, we're pretty comparable to that. Their health insurance that they budget is $36 million a year. However, because they contract with one hospital that does their, they have United Healthcare, goes in and does their, their discounts, they're able to get a 62% discount to where they are actually paying out $21 million a year. So they're saving $15 million by doing that. Now, because you have to go through their one hospital, you have to use their doctors. Now, people are gonna say, you're, you're limiting me to what kind of doctor I can go to. Well, then you're just gonna have to pay the out, out-of-network cost for that. And it sucks to do that, but that's just the reality of what you have to do. Now, because they're able to do that, this is what their premiums are for 2016. Now, for, this is a, what they're able to do is a 95, 5% split on everybody. So for a single person, for the employee, it's 22 bucks a month. For the county, it's $414 a month. For the, for the plus one, it's $818 for the employer and $43.98 for the employee. And for the family, it's $1,200 a month, and the employee is $63.76. Now, that's a 95, 5% split. Now, if we look at ours where it's basically about an 80/20, or 85/15, which one is it? 85/15. For the single, just for the county paying, it's 667. I mean, it's $250 difference right there per member per month that you guys are paying. For the family, for the plus one, it, it, it goes for, it's for the county, it's $1,118. And for the, for the family plan, it's $1,700. They're doing $500 less per, per month, and yet they're able, for the employer, or for the employee, it was from 266 a month for us, they're able to do it at 63.76. So it's a, I mean, yeah, you're gonna limit them what they have their options for, and I understand this can be considered radical. But if you're talking about saving that kind of money, you've got, like UNMC, they have satellites all over Omaha and Douglas County. If you wanted to go to CHI, same deal, they have, both CHI and UNMC are both gonna be trauma certified. So if you have to go to a trauma center, you'll be able to go to one of those. Now, if you wanna go to within their network, now the county would have to say, you're going within their network, you know, whoever, I guess it'd be Blue Cross right now, you would hope that they would be able to, to make that 62% percentage discount with them because you're solely going with them. So, you know, as, as an employee and a future retiree employee with those discounts, we're hoping that we can drive down the cost and everything else. And if you start adding into all these wellness programs, maybe that will drive even the cost even lower. But I think it's an option, as, as somebody that is comparable, you know, they're not doing anything way better than us, and they're, they're just a state below, they're in the Midwest, you know, this is something that I just think that we, as, as a county board, you should at least explore, figure out how are they able to do it so much differently, so much better, for so much cheaper? I mean, you're talking millions.
And this isn't really anything new, because Union Pacific did this years ago when the old St. Joes.
Yeah.
The employees used to have to go to St. Joe's, then they went out for contract in Bergen, was it, until they got rid of it, and, and got rid of that model.
We're not talking, you know, $5 or $10 here, I mean, you're talking, literally, for the county, you're talking millions of dollars. In savings.
Yeah, so.
Go ahead.
So the, the heart of what they're doing there, right back to this whole conversation about ACOs, is risk sharing. So they're sharing risk, that, that covered entity of that county agency or whatever that was, with.
Yeah, it's a county agency.
With the provider, United Healthcare, I think you said.
They're, they're the third-party administrative.
Right, so what they're doing is they're, they're doing risk sharing. And at the end of each year, as they, they put those figures together, the premium figures, they will split on some level, whatever savings is inherited in the program. So there's incentives on both sides.
Right.
Now, picking up on that, the beauty of Omaha, Nebraska, is we have, there are essentially two ACOs right now from which to choose. Blue Cross is aligned with Nebraska Health Network, which is, Nebraska Health Network is an ACO that was formed about six, seven years ago, that utilizes both the Nebraska medicine and Methodist systems. So you got that, that alignment, and that ability to share risk and save the kind of money that Sheriff's talking about with that option. Then alternatively, you've got your former carrier, United Healthcare, has aligned and created an ACO relationship with CHI. And so, so when that, the example you just gave, those folks, it sounds like their provider choices are very limited, they are concentrated, which is the trade-off that we're talking about here. This goes back to HMOs versus PPOs, history repeating itself. But the beauty of Omaha, Nebraska, is you could, you could choose, Blue, to have a similar type of an arrangement and have it nearly as restrictive in terms of provider options and choices. That said, you're still gonna have people in a group of this size that prefer CHI providers, or prefer Methodist providers. And you can't now really successfully, successfully and affordably have access to everybody, you just can't.
But with those two choices, it's pretty nice.
Yeah.
And to just put another.
In Omaha.
Spin on that is, the hospital systems are so excited about it that they, the, Nebraska Health Network was formed, and they recruited Lee Henke away from Blue Cross and Blue Shield, a pretty high level, some say maybe someday was gonna be the chairman. They brought him over, he is the CEO of Nebraska Health Network, they're very serious about this undertaking. And they are looking anxiously to partner with payers like Douglas County would be. They would love to sit down with you, and, and Blue Cross is obviously involved in that conversation as well. But the sheriff, he makes a most salient point, yeah, is that you can talk about plan design and HSAs and wellness programs, all this stuff is nipping on the edges, and it's also been tried and had its some successes, some failures over the years. The real nugget now that everybody's chasing is lowering chronic illness, preventing chronic illness, preventing an employee, you wanna see statistics that'll scare the socks off you, if somebody has one chronic illness, what does that do to your costs, what if they have two, and then what if they have three? And that data, Blue Cross will share that with you, or Aon will share it with you, and it's scary. I mean, like, what that does to the per-person cost, and if you can, as they're successfully doing all they're doing, minimize it, but they're, they're reducing the folks that get that first chronic illness, or they're reducing the folks that have three to two, or two to one.
Commissioner Boyle?
I, because health insurance is so personal, I really wonder, you know, we could ask, you know, where do you go, CHI or UNMC, it doesn't make a lot, or Methodist, but I mean, the employees that you represent, you know, I remember when Blue Cross Blue Shield was in a battle with CHI over they wouldn't do things, and that really caused a lot of chaos. Employees were very unhappy, you know, I, I sure don't wanna throw this into the mix, I think it's a terrific idea. Actually, I, I said to Commissioner Boarderson about 10 years ago, so why don't we just write a check for $20 million to some hospital and tell them to take care of everybody, you know? But anyway, I mean, it's close to that.
You were visionary.
Yeah, we need to explore this fully, but I'm curious. How's this gonna affect the employees at University of San Antonio, are they gonna be freaked out again or?
I, I'll speak on our behalf, if it saves them a couple hundred bucks a month, you're darn right they'll do it.
Does that sound right?
No, that's just.
Yeah.
People that I know, now, there may be people that have, are going through cancer treatments and everything else, and are saying, well, I'm a doctor.
Yeah.
But you've got UNMC that is a premier, you know, it's a teaching hospital, and, and they're on the forefront on cancer research and stroke research and everything else.
Commissioner Morgan?
Well, I tend to agree that we really need to seriously explore that. And I think with the choices we have, I think it merits a lot of consideration. And I don't think we can ever please anyone, everyone.
You might have been right the first time.
I was just speaking for myself. No, but I think, you know, we need to at least explore it totally.
Absolutely.
And make sure it's an open meeting, so we have the discussion. And because of the choices that you brought out so well, I mean, we've got the best going for us in Omaha compared to this other. And it's a continuing problem, it's, it's gonna only get worse.
But it still goes back, and I'll turn it over to Chris, because it still goes back to what he was talking about in terms of, you can design your plan however you want, but if employees aren't taking a good proactive approach to their own health, your costs are still gonna be, continue to rise.
No, I was just gonna say, to your point, to add on your point about vetting it through, letting it hear out, and I'm just saying, this would have to be a 6-0, 5-1 vote to me, because you do one of these split things. And I'm just saying, the board would have to just jump off this bridge and pick a side, because you're not gonna please either side. And I'm just saying that, 'cause if it came down to that, because of my relationship work-wise, I, I can't vote on it, so I'm just saying.
You wanna be unanimous on which side of the bridge we jump off of?
No, legitimately, because, because if, if he gets into one of those like 4-3s, 5-something, the board's gonna have to pick a side and jump, and live with it. So.
What can we do to make this move?
Well, I think what we would do right now is again, add that to the agenda for fully vetting it. And so if you have another county besides Sedgwick or Marcos, you can maybe look at that to determine our comparables, if there's any that are doing things different that we should explore as well.
Mark likes, Marcos likes Green County.
Wago Spum says we.
He doesn't like it, we, I kid about it.
As I say.
We kid about it.
Yeah, I was just asking Jim, it's, which house? Marcos, it's after, go ahead, Marcos. It's Via Christie, right? That's, that's a health system. I mean, which, that's, that's like what's tough about which house, like they have one major health system versus us, we have two major health systems. So Via Christie is the, the major provider.
They said they had five hospitals, but they said they, the central country. But once they try and get everyone to go to theirs.
That's a big deal there, so.
But you're still, you're still talking about essentially the same amount of employees compared to us and everything else.
Without a doubt, which house, Sedgwick, is our prime comparable for Omaha, at this point in time, for sure.
Did you have a question?
Well, my question was, I mean, they did this, how long have they had this in place? How successful has it been, 'cause I'm sure they've been tracking it. Number two, what, how did they come up with this? What other county had it that they did comparable with? I mean, it can just snowball down the road and see how comparables match up to it. You're, you're asking, you're putting? I, I'm just. I've talked to them for the last couple of years, this isn't something that they came up with in the last six months. This has been going on for years. It's just now, I think, it's time for us to start thinking up different ideas and maybe just give us different options. Whether or not we do that is a whole nother deal, but it's just, to me, it would be, it'd be great if I didn't have to fork over so much money to have health insurance, and, and they're suckable, so, gee, for everything else. But they just, they're able to do it better than us, and yet we are basically the same county as them.
So that actually gives us two things, to look at, the central states again, to see how that would vet out, and then either Sedgwick County or Marcos, if you can come up with any other ones that are doing something similar to Sedgwick, that we could potentially look at as well.
Is that an ACO, or is that just a different?
Sure, sure sounds like it. It has all the.
Smells like a duck.
Okay. Yeah, that's great, thanks, Jim.
Oh, yes, sure, go ahead.
I had recently requested demographics for one of the groups that we currently represent here in the county. And in order to do the whole county, if that's something you'd wanna look at, I'm gonna say that you can expand that to everyone else, so.
Yeah, we'll be doing that on the ground.
I'm giving you data.
Yeah.
It wasn't going down that way. Not even down, down there, so.
No, that, this'll definitely be ongoing now from here forward.
And they're more than willing to come in and talk to you at any time.
Okay, great, thanks. Thank you. Item two is explore what NACO provides for retiring health insurance, and they don't, so.
Oh, I, I guess, no, what I really wanted to see was what they're doing, 'cause I, I was on their board once, and of course, Blue Cross Blue Shield does their, all these counties across the state. And I mentioned to them, there are a lot of gulps if Douglas County came in, you know, because of the size and all the rest of the losses and everything. So I mean, but I don't know whether it would make any sense, in light of what's been talked about today, I think we've got a couple of really great ways to go. But I was just curious, what would happen, what would the premiums be if we were able to get into NACO's plan? And what would it cost?
We did ask, and they basically said our claim history was too high, that they didn't want us.
All right.
So, I mean, it, it just kinda stopped that? Because they said no, so.
They kicked out a bitter barn.
So we can revisit that as well, if they want to relook at it, but they did, they did say no.
See if they changed their mind.
And then apart, again, as a retiree, they stopped that many years ago on their plan.
Yeah, I wonder under Jim McGuire's system, is there any place for retirees in there? Because when I heard some of the premiums that were being builded out for employee, retired people over $1,000 a month and stuff, man, that is really tough, particularly when you're getting a, you know, a $2,900 a month pension or something. That just not, can't happen. I mean, there's gotta be, I'd like to figure out another way to get them coverage to be marvelous, we get them in that program near term.
Well, that actually kinda dovetails, unless you had something else with NACO, we did check that out. But the next item is to explore whether retirees could obtain insurance through the ACA exchange. And that is up for discussion, that is maybe taking a look at whether that would be more promising and feasible than what we currently have. Scott, I, okay.
So one, one of the unintended consequences of the ACA is that employers that provide packages, like Douglas County does, that meets both affordability standards and minimum coverage value standards, and assent, and in essence, void the eligibility of all of their employees to subsidies on the ACA, on the exchange.
The retirees could go.
Yeah, so if retirees were in a class that was not eligible for, or not covered by the county's plan, then yeah, then you could have a whole, then there'd be a conversation. And then if they, if they also, if they are, there'd be Medicare secondary payer issues that you need to explore as well. But if they are not, if they are not covered by or eligible for the plan, then that is definitely something that you all should.
And the Medicare is not an issue, because the retiree coverage ends at 65.
Okay.
And Aon is looking into the exchange option, we asked them to look into that.
We are looking into this.
Aon is looking.
Aon, okay.
Now, the other concern there obviously is the exchanges aren't going so well, and there's fewer and fewer insurance companies that are playing in the exchanges, and fewer and fewer provider networks that are available. I think you all have seen the data on that.
And the costs are, the costs are increasing too, correct?
Yeah, they are, and what's happened, in large part, what's driving it is the selection problem. There's people are just getting in and out, and it's not really an insurance pool the way it was supposed to be. Again, unintended consequences, but the reality is, is that, that branch is about to snap. It's not, they're just not gonna be viable in long-term exchanges, so I don't know if that's something you wanna put a whole lot of emphasis on, because it most might not be.
Wouldn't it be helpful, for example, if Nebraska and these other states have dug in their heels on Medicaid expansion, and also, I mean, be very partisan, 'cause everybody knows I am anyway, but Republicans have blocked this consistently, and they wanna drive it down to the ground. I mean, maybe if, you know, attitudes change, that they'll decide to fix it instead of blow it up. You know, I, I just, I think it's, this is planned, this isn't an accident, this stuff is all core, all coerced, it's already, this is the way they want it. I'm sorry to be so political, but I think that's a big part of it, I really do.
So does anyone have comments from this side of the table? So, does anyone have, um, comments from this side of the table?
Commission.
What are we talking about?
Oh, Matt, yeah. The retirees.
Oh, retirees?
No, the retirees, and giving them the option for going to purchase their insurance through the A C A exchange.
Not necessarily giving them the option of that. There's another way with corrections to save our retirees some money, which we've looked into and researched. And I may ask Jim McGuire to touch on this, he's a little more knowledgeable than I, I am with the helps. You know much about the helps, Jim?
Well, the helps, the, the county already has it for.
For corrections.
I know.
And we're talking three hundred, four hundred employees down there. But it's a law, law enforcement benefit, which basically, from my understanding, allows the insurance premiums to be pre-tax, am I correct?
Up to three thousand dollars.
Up to three thousand dollars, which is, it's a few dollars to help our retirees out. And I've asked about it in the past, and I haven't got anywhere with it. But my understanding is the federal government would allow corrections also, all under the Helps Act.
Yeah.
Which would mean a few dollars a month for our retirees.
You'd just have to, have to ask them. How do we do that? Um, it's already offered through, through us. Through, through, the county already offers it to our department, to deputies. You would just have to ask the, corrections would just have to ask to be included. That's what I'm asking.
Kathy?
When the pension committee did, uh, pass the, the vote to do the Helps Act for the, um, sheriffs, it's safety officers is the, is what's designated in the I R S regulations. And the pension committee didn't feel comfortable going beyond the deputy sheriffs, because truly, we knew that is a safety officer. What the pension committee also did was say if they go to the I R S and get a ruling that they would fall in that class, then we would go ahead and extend the helps to those individuals.
I, I can speak to that. I, I can guarantee you, corrections, the U Center, the county attorney, the public defenders, if they retire, and they are getting a pension check through Douglas County, they're all eligible.
Get something ready.
Yeah, we need an opinion.
So, then what's the cost to us?
Pardon me? What's the cost to us? It is no cost, it is no cost to the county. What it does is allows that retiree, that safety officer retiree, to have pre-tax up to three thousand dollars for their medical premium. So, after three thousand dollars, then it's taxed. So, if you have a family coverage, you're paying five ninety-five, you know, it's gonna take you about six months, and you're gonna be at your three-thousand-dollar limit. Um, Mutual has set that up for us, so that once they get to the three-thousand-dollar limit, then they, then it's taxed. So, it comes up.
But does that, do they have to be, is it, say that the county doesn't have a retiree plan, then how does that benefit law enforcement? Do they, is it on their, whatever insurance plan they have?
Yes, yes, and they can do, it's for long-term care, it's for Medicare supplement plans. Because we have retirees that were law enforcement that are not even on our insurance, but they have long-term care, or they have a Medicare supplement. And it just has to be set up with, you know, our Mutual who issues the retire, uh, direct deposits. And they just enroll in it, and they get it set up with Mutual of Omaha, and it comes out of their pension check first, that premium, and then the, then the rest of the balance is taxed. So, it is no cost to the county. Um, it costs the individual twenty-five dollars to set it up, so the individual has to pay twenty-five dollars to set it up. Or if you make a different change, or if you change to a different carrier, whatever, they, they would have that minimum twenty-five dollars. So, uh, we pass that on to the individual that wanted to be in that, because it, it was a benefit to them to have it pre-taxed.
Can we put this on an agenda?
Yeah.
I don't know why we couldn't do it. So, we should, we should add, we should add Douglas County U Center and the county attorney, the public defender.
Well, we need to.
We need to get something from the I R S in writing.
By the time it works with the I R S, you need an opinion.
Yeah.
Otherwise, you're, you're at risk.
Yep.
Because it's pretty tax, you're dealing with a tax.
Yep, yep.
So, who would be there?
If you get us something, that'd be great. Jim said he could get us something.
Would it be on?
Who will?
Jim, I can get it.
That would be great.
So, we would also ha- ha- have to check with Mutual as far as their cost. You say twenty-five dollars, but if all of a sudden we have four different sets of employees, that cost may go up or not.
No, no, it's, it's just, it's just a flat fee. They just, just a setup fee, I guess, is what they charged us, and the pension committee felt like they didn't really feel that we should pay that.
Right.
That this is a benefit to the individual. So, no, it's just, it's a matter of them filling out paperwork and with their retirement stuff, and then we send it to Mutual. Mutual sets it up, once it's set up, you know, if the premiums increase from year to year, it's not an issue. But if you change from, you know, if they changed their supplement plan to a different company, then it's a new setup, then you, they would pay that fee. But once you get it set up, it's pretty stagnant.
Patrick?
Uh, we need to know, was it the county board or the pension committee that makes the decision whether or not to extend the Helps Act to other departments?
Well, it'd be the county board that decides it.
Yeah, I mean, that's why I was a little confused, because Kathy said the pension committee has made that decision in the past, because the premium comes out of the pension check.
Oh.
But I don't know if that's a rule, or if that's just something that just has always been that way. I mean, if it's the county, county board's retirement, county board is the one that provides insurance to retirees, so.
I don't really recall that, and it could, could have been that, um, it went to the county board, but it was a vote by the pension committee to allow the Helps Act.
I retired, uh, two thousand ten from sheriff's office, and I signed up for the help, I think, at one time, twenty-five-dollar fee I paid.
Okay, thank, thank you.
During that, during the time when we got it implemented, it was a recommendation from the pension board. It was signed off by the, by the commissioners. So, you guys did sign on a form.
Okay. So, it would go through again, check, we'd have to get the I R S ruling to add these others?
Jim, I think Jim's got it.
Yeah. McGuire might have it.
He's gonna get it.
Okay. Anything else on that item?
Maria?
Yes.
Uh, retiree from the A C A, you're looking at either or, or just, um, not having a retiree on the county, you let it all, and having them go to the court.
Um, either or, I mean, that's something that we haven't vetted completely, that was thrown out there, that if, um, we stay the course of what the plan was in terms of the retirees, where it would either be you all pay a hundred percent of the cost at some point, each year it goes up a little bit, or instead of doing that, should we take a look at maybe offering the A C A exchange option, to where you would go out and look at your own, um, options, and then pick the option? And then we would determine a dollar amount to put towards that.
So, the county would still subsidize to some extent?
Potentially, yeah, yeah. But we haven't vetted it enough to see whether or not, you know, it was feasible, um, cost-wise, or, and as Scott said, the exchanges are changing rapidly, and may not be a good option, so.
Mark?
If we were to stay the course where we're at, using, um, actuarial tables, how long would we have retirees on our plan?
If they, if they retire under Rule seventy-five, and they retired at age fifty, ultimately, you could have them on for fifteen years. Uh, I give a report every six months and annually to the pension committee based on the average age. Um, and, you know, it's gonna be all over the board from, from January to December. But average age right now is almost sixty, uh, for the average retiree.
And we, retirees no longer get subsidized by, after a certain, was it twenty-ten? Is that correct?
No, you're, you're still subsidizing.
New hires, new hires.
Uh.
We changed the pension point.
Because they can't, they can't be sixty-five.
Yeah, I thought we changed, so.
But, but when you got rid of Rule seventy-five, in effect, you're.
For all intents and purposes, if they're not early retiree.
Right.
Early retiree.
Yeah, because that's normal retirement age.
So, that's effectively what happened.
Yes.
Because then they go straight on Medicare. Oh, okay, thanks.
But ultimately, that's gonna take you at least ten years, you know, for somebody that's under that rule, at least, at a minimum, ten years, you know, before they would be thinking about taking a retirement.
And, and the amount will reduce every year?
The amount will.
The amount for subsidizing will reduce every year?
As people are retiring, yes. Because we're not hiring new employees under the Rule seventy-five anymore.
Correct.
Okay, any other questions or comments from anybody? We'll move to, um, to explore paying retirees docked out of insurance coverage and obtain coverage elsewhere. We kinda talked about that in terms of, um, the, kind of the detriment effect it would have, or reasons why we couldn't do that. But, um, one, one question, though, I had when we were on that one. Say that the county, um, doesn't have the insurance plan that they have now. Say that we have not to do that, but that we do come up with a dollar amount that we give employees as a whole to go out and shop for their, then could we do it? Or would we still be responsible, and could we be putting ourselves in jeopardy for A C A penalties?
Um, maybe. So, what you're, what you're speaking to now, everything's got a name in, in insurance, and this is called defined contribution, which is a movement that has really gotten spurred along by the Affordable Care Act. And a number of larger, jumbo-sized employers have opted to go this route. So, what the county does now, which most employers of your size do, is define benefits, health insurance. So, you all decide, plan, network, the cost, sharing all of that stuff, and the employees have, uh, the option to pick from whatever you've all chosen. The flip of that is defined contribution. So, rather than you, uh, go the way that you've been going, you set a fixed budgeted amount of dollars, and it may be just for health insurance, and maybe for the entire plethora of benefits. And it may or may not be tax-referred, depending on how you set it up. And the employees then take that allocation of dollars from the county, and they go out and purchase their own care. In that model, the way it's been deployed to date, you're usually talking about a private exchange rather than a public exchange. So, there's a private exchange with which the insurance, the employees can go to, to shop and purchase their care, using their county money, in this case, which may or may not be pre-tax. And actually, A I is a company that, that offers one of those private exchanges, as well as, uh, some insurance companies themselves, and as well as third-party vendors. So, that, it sounds like that's what you're, what you're talking about there. Which then, if somebody wants to take their allocations and go on their spouse's plan, they'll be able to do that. Or if they wanna take, put some money into an H S A, you know, if they had a twelve-five plan, they could do that. So, it really would come down to the individual level to choose from a whole number of options what they wanted to do.
Richard Moore? Well, it sounds pretty interesting. I, I think maybe, I didn't realize this could be something that we could really possibly explore again and vet it out, and give it to the unions to consider. And, uh, they can, we can attach some dollars to it, so they can see what could happen, and what they've been, I like the idea of being able to attach it to your spouse's policy, that's pretty terrific, particularly if it's non-tax, not, not taxed, that'd be dynamite. So, maybe we should explore that too, and see what happens, and maybe try to figure out some way to get the retired people in there too somehow.
Yeah.
Well, that's great.
That, that sounds, yeah. So, that's another one we'll completely vet through, with the other descriptions that we have on the table.
But, but on that topic, it's interesting, because employers are kind of going both sides with this. So, employers are saying, we're gonna give you money to opt out of our plan and go on your spouse's plan. And that actually helps the employer that's providing the opt-out or the waiver bonus. On the flip side, employers are deploying rather dramatically spouse eligibility changes. Let's say if your spouse works somewhere else that offers coverage that can't be on our plan, and if they are, they're either subject to an additional cost, or they're just flat, like U P S, they're just not allowed on the plan. Um, I will say that if the county hasn't explored that, and obviously, there's a lot of considerations, um, that's, that's a way to rather dramatically reduce the cost of your, your plan rather quickly.
We actually, we, we don't go that route, but what happened, I know historically, is, um, when I first came on, you, you basically had to take it, whether you wanted it or not, you had to take it. But we now have a waiver that allows the employee that if they don't want it, because they're on their spouse or some other, uh, plan, that they can waive out of our plan.
With the exception of central states. Central states, employees covered under central states' plan have to take the coverage.
Correct.
As, as an employee.
Correct.
Even if their spouse, even if they're eligible to be on their spouse's plan.
It does not matter.
Elsewhere. That would be something to consider, though.
And, and when we did have that plan where you had to take the coverage, it was the five-hundred-dollar deductible, and it was free. So, it didn't cost the individual employee nothing.
Right. But it was still costing the county, because that employee didn't necessarily need the insurance.
Correct.
You know, we're already, please, we're looking into sort of things, right? I have one other question, maybe it's already been discussed, but I'm curious how the premiums that are paid through your plans, central states, how, what are the employees paying compared to what they're paying if they're not in your plan? I mean, are there, are there substantial savings with you? No savings?
What, yes, well, um, one of the biggest advantages being attached to it, like talent plan, it's a non-profit, nonprofit.
Yeah.
Uh, and they have to spend so much back into claims.
Right.
Uh, which keeps their rates down. Uh, they're typically very high-quality plans, low deductibles, low out-of-pockets, uh, which, like I said, cover everything. Um, they, uh, are guaranteed rates for three years, which the only way they can go above those rates, well, they can't go above, they're not to exceed rates. Um, the county has experienced reduction in rates in the past, which comes back to the county that are already in there.
But we could, we could get what the premium costs are on your plan versus what, because we looked at that before.
I've actually just, just provided for, to Mr. Marcus or Rhodes, which is a small group. Obviously, the rate would be different if you had the entire.
Right.
Yeah, or any groups that are.
Is the stipulation still that you can't get your own claim history, though? Because of how big they are?
I, I.
I know when we looked at it before, that was something that they said we couldn't do, but that they were looking at? Being able, you don't know?
I don't work for them, so I, I can't answer that.
Okay.
That's, you're correct.
Oh, it's still that way?
Yeah.
It'd be, I think it'd be great to look into this.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I have a question on that. Central states, do they offer H S A type plans?
No.
No.
So, it's just a standard.
Yep.
Okay.
All right. The next item is to discuss adding sexual orientation to the nondiscrimination clause that is included in county contracts and the county personnel policy.
I asked that this be put on, um, and I know, I, I mentioned to Karen, I, it's been brought before the Civil Service Commission. I think the Civil Service Commission has to act on it, and the message I got was, we're gonna wait and see what the state does, so. Um, my concern is that, first of all, we have contracts with the city of Omaha, and I believe that, you know, we, when they have a nondiscriminatory clause in there, I think we're bound by it, when we have a contract with them. So, anything that we do, uh, whether it's the operation of the parks, or whether it's the Visitors Convention Bureau, any of those things where there's merged employees, I think, you know, I'll ask if somebody knows, but I think we're, we're responsible for that. And the other thing, what it also says is that if we are, if we don't adopt this policy, it almost through the back door says, we do discriminate. I mean, if, if we don't have that in there, where we say, we don't discriminate people because of their sexual orientation, and all of the other things that's spelled out in the city ordinance, uh, then someone, I think, could discriminate, because it's not prohibited. So, I'd like to see this move on. I think it's a real important, um, declaration of our support of our employees. Uh, it's none of our business what their lifestyle is, but I think we gotta do everything we can. We did things with insurance where we included them, and, uh, I think we need to step up and say, we also respect the right of your privacy. We want you to be protected and feel safe here. You can't be discriminated against because of who you are.
Patrick?
And I was gonna say, I agree with that. I mean, just personally, I agree with that, I think you should do it. I think you're gonna be told by the county attorney's office that you may not be able to do it, because apparently, there's Attorney General's opinion that came out after the city of Omaha passed their ordinance. The Attorney General's opinion says you cannot expand that protective class beyond what the state law allows for, provides for. My personal opinion is that you should do it anyway, because just do it, and if somebody challenges you, let them challenge you. That's my personal, I'm not. That's my personal, I'm not giving you legal advice or anything like that. My personal opinion is it's important enough for you to just do it. And what's the worst that could happen? Somebody challenges you.
Attorney General will write us a mean letter.
Right.
Or Teresa. Teresa, will you keep us out of jail?
Did I say anything inaccurate?
I always try to keep you out of jail, Commissioner.
I just want to speak for you, I know you're here. Did I say anything, did I, did I say anything inaccurate?
What, what you said is accurate. There's an opinion from two thousand and twelve from the Attorney General's office that talks about, that addresses this very issue. And the conclusion was at that time, the political subdivisions do not have the authority to expand protected classes beyond that provided in state statute. Or I suppose federal, they didn't speak about federal, but in the Eighth Circuit at this time, which is our sort of federally, the Eighth Circuit is not recognized under Title VII, which would be the appropriate federal law, they've not recognized these two classes as additional protected classes at this time. There are some cases pending that the EEOC, the Equal Opportunity Commission, has brought in these two protected classes, but they didn't bring them in the Eighth Circuit. They're pending in other circuits that are considered not as conservative as the Eighth Circuit, and that those are not yet resolved.
Well, I, I, I feel very strongly about this. I think, you know, we should, we should declare that people are protected, that we will not discriminate against people because of their sexual orientation. That's how I feel. I'd like to see us try it and see what happens. And hopefully it would pass the county board and so we get a mean letter from somebody, you know, we'll deal with it. That's what I'd like to do. Do you have any problem with that?
No, we'll, we'll write up something and then put it on the next agenda here and then if it's been approved or recommended, we'll put it on.
Can we look at the city, city's ordinance?
Marcus, if you want to see if there's any others we can look at?
Great, thank you very much, I appreciate it very much. And maybe, you know, big corporations, UPE and all these companies have them, so look to see what they say.
Sure.
Thank you.
Anything else on that item? Yes?
I do, I just want to, my name's Tom Mark and I'm on the Civil Service Commission.
Oh, yeah.
And so I just wanted to know what our role, you know, I've heard of a couple of different things of what our role as civil service is on this issue and know what we should be doing or what our next step is on who you're talking about this for.
Well, I'll be completely candid, I think it is your responsibility. But the message I got was that the Civil Service Commission as a whole had decided not to take your position. But I think, you know, as a, as a, the elected representatives of the community, I think in spite of that, I think we have a responsibility to declare that the county does not discriminate if you're homosexual or gay or lesbian or, we don't care. If you meet the qualifications for a job, that's all we care about. And that's what I think we ought to do.
Do, do you all remember taking it up as the civil service? Commission?
Paul, Karen?
Um, yes, the commission has discussed it on two or three different separate occasions. And we've relied on the county attorney's opinion to date. The commission has discussed it and felt that they were going to take the more conservative approach and, and follow the county attorney's recommendation, which was at that time that the county or the Civil Service Commission doesn't have necessarily the authority to expand the protected clauses that are defined by the state constitution.
So what I would ask to be prepared for our next discussion on this is the history of what has occurred and when and why's. And then we'll look at a couple of policies that are out there to see whether or not it's something we want to move forward or change for.
I just, I don't think civil rights, which I think this is, civil rights cannot be put to the vote. You can't vote away civil rights. You can't remain silent about a person's civil rights. It is just abhorrent.
Okay.
Thank you.
With that, any other business for the good of the cause?
Mr. Burges, I just, I'd just like to say, oh, excuse me, go ahead.
I just, in our emails, it looks like two other unions are going to move over from the three-hundred to six-hundred to the six-hundred-and-twelve-er plan. With the savings, there's going to be some savings there. Was that included in the, because that's three-hundred-six-er.
It was included in negotiations.
No, no, no. Was it included in the cost assumptions, you know, across the board, bringing increases and increase for the retirees? Did you include that?
Yeah, because it all had to do with our claims experience, so yes.
I just want to make a comment. I, it really is, really a nice thing to be able to sit here and talk about common interests with the people who really deliver all the services. So you're the folks that are on the front line and do things with the citizen see all the time, whether it's license plates or holding somebody over and giving them a ticket. Oh, I didn't mean that, but. But we do, it's nice to have this cooperative feeling.
All of them.
Chris, I'm going to have to be walking, I guess. You'll be going up, partner.
Does anybody have a car in the garage that needs a ticket to get out? All right, no other business?
No, I think it was great that we had six of the commissioners here to listen and move. Hopefully four.
Yep.
That was great.
Thanks, Alan, Mary Ann.